Good evening. Tonight, we'll start with prayer and prayers led by Mayor Pro Tem Michael Ball.
If you would like to, bow your heads, please. In the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, all praise is due to God, the Lord Jesus, the master of the day of judgment, the most compassionate, the most merciful. You alone we worship, and you alone we ask for help and guidance. Guide us on the straight path, the paths of those who you have blessed, and not of the paths of those who incur your wrath, nor those who go astray. And Lord, please look over our administrators in the city, and all the workers in the city, Lord, please best him that they can come to work and go home safely. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Again, good evening to everyone that's here. This is a public meeting. I'm gonna wait till y'all stop talking. Good evening again. This is a public meeting, and the audience is asked to remain from any type of outbursts, interruptions, clapping, excessive behavior. A reminder, I need our cell phones and electronic devices turned off, or down on silence, please. Audience, if you can do the same thing, I truly would appreciate it. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Lamara Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Oystash.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
Nine members present, zero absent, and have a quorum there.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements?
I do, I have several. I want everyone to be aware that we love Saginaw businesses. It's going to be a trunk or treat event on Thursday, October 27th, from 4:30 to 6:30 PM, and citizens are invited to join in the fun. The event is hosted by the city, the Downtown Development Authority, and the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, and it will feature a community tent, touch a truck, police and fire vehicles, and the fire department's safety house. The free event will take place in the Public Works parking lot, and to attend, we ask that you enter from Holland Avenue. Also, the Halloween trick-or-treat hours are scheduled for October 31st from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM. Please be safe and have fun. And now, if you want to vote absentee for the November 8th election, absentee ballots are available in the clerk's office during regular business hours, and we do have sample ballots that you can take and look at. And the clerk's office will be open Saturday, November 5th, from 8 o'clock AM until 4 o'clock PM for absentee voting. And then, due to that November 8th election, the next regular city council meetings will be November 21st and 28th. November 21st and 28th. Council, please mark your calendars. Mayor Distello takes us to public input.
I'd like to welcome all who signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you're saying. You will be called to the podium by the clerk, because we'll have three minutes' limit, which is timed by the clerk. Be sure you cover all of the main topics. Once again, I'm asking that you remain courteous, respectful to the members of the public, and to those who are watching on SGTV, and in the council chambers, so that we can take serious consideration into what is being asked of us. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is Clint Bryant, Sr. I believe I see him. Mr. Bryant?
I don't see him.
Let's go with Charles Sledge.
Good evening.
City manager, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council. Good evening again. I'm one of the board of directors for the Fairground Association, and also a homeowner with a house on Fullton Street. I'm here to speak about the horrible-looking site, the GM site. The GM site that's just sitting there for Loomis Academy children, Westchester Village senior homes, residents of Genesee, Harrow, Pemberton, Letcher, Fairfax, Fullton, the Fairground Association, and surrounding streets and businesses, and I could keep going on with the list of people that's concerned about this travesty of a site that we have to look at on a daily basis. One of my main concerns is, when I go to work, I work at Art Daily Academy, I get up early, get to work, so I have to pass Loomis on my way to work. So I have to stop sometime, because it's dark outside, because you see children coming from across from Genesee, and they have to go right past those bushes, those trees that's sitting there. And God knows what, we know what could happen, if some sick person within our city get inside those trees and try to do something to one of our babies that's trying to get to school, to just get an education. One of my thoughts was, have anyone thought about possibly getting the grocery store chain there? We always talking about we have a food desert on the east side of town, but there go a perfectly good lot that's sitting there, and I just wonder, have anybody reached out to any of our major local food chains and tried to get something there? It's just sitting there. Trees are not growing up through the cracks of the driveway, and we're not so concerned about the riverfront medical hub and putting $5 million here, and $1 million there, and the east side of town won't even have a good grocery store where you can go get some fresh fruit and vegetables, meat, anything for your kids. We have to drive all the way out to the Walmart on Tibwasi. I truly think that taxpaying citizens in that area deserve better. I truly believe that you want better, because I know you have a lot on your plate. All I'm asking you is, can we try a little bit harder to get that area cleaned up? If not just for the citizens that live there, think about the babies that go to school and cross Genesee and go there. There's a lot of taxpaying citizens over there that open their door every morning, walk out their front door, they have to look right across the street at that. I'm sitting there watching people barbecue and families there, they have to walk across the street and look at that. So please, thank you for your time, thank you for anything that you can do for that part of the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cherie Long.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Cherie Long. I am heart of the city. I started up nonprofit organization to help bridge the gap with people with intellectual and special needs in our community that I feel like has been left behind. I've started with a plan of action. My plan of action was to start with social events to get people aware of the problem we see, I see, in the community. I also started working with critical learning skills. Critical learning skills and social skills are very important for this dynamic, or this group of people. I have a daughter who has special needs, so I know this personally, that there is a problem within our city in keeping these people engaged and included within our community. My mission is to create a safe space for these individuals to gather and continue learning beyond the age of 26 with our ISD system, 26-day age out of the system. There is not a lot of social and critical programs to help our people, those group of people, to continue learning beyond that. We have college, we have the military. My daughter personally cannot go out and maintain a job or go to college. I've also approached Saginaw Valley and other institutions, because I feel like just because they can't attend college doesn't mean they shouldn't be given the opportunity to go and visit those campuses. Me personally, I am a social work major. Social work stands for our community, so I feel like if we're in these programs, we should be allowed to bring those individuals in that we have to learn to work with, to learn about what's going on within our community. I've met with several, introduced myself to several council members, and I chose to go back to school to get my social work. I've been in healthcare for 23 years. I chose to change the dynamic and go back for social work, so I can stand up and do something within my community. Last time I was here, I heard Mr. Williams say, "What are we doing without the ARPA funds?" I am doing for my community out of my own pockets. I have several people who are backing me, Buna Vista Community Center. We have no Buna Vista Community Center, as well as Center Courts is backing me and letting me do my programs out of their community centers, so that we can engage these people and include them in society. So I'm here today introducing myself, but also to ask you guys to open your minds, open your eyes, and include everyone in the community, and pay attention to this group of people, because they need us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Audrey Beatty.
Audrey's not here.
Thank you, Chief. Let's go to Craig Tatum.
Esteemed members of city council, I invite you, as you contemplate ARPA funds, to give consideration to men of impact. As a matter of fact, we're here today. These men that you see are a sample of the men that's involved with Mission in the City Saginaw African-American pastors. They're men from our churches, they're men in our communities. We're here today to say that we're asking you to give serious consideration to men of impact. It's a program designed to mentor young men ages 8 through 14. Available research points to a range of potential benefits of mentoring black males, but males in general, such as reduced health risk behavior, improved academic outcomes, social emotional well-being, mental health, interpersonal relationships, and of course, racial identity. The need for mentoring interventions for young black males in particular is at an all-time high. It's a crisis. Black boys face many challenges, many of which stem directly from the failures of key institutions that shape their development and prospects for healthy futures. In schools, for example, black males face over-referral for school disciplinary action and special education. Similarly, within the criminal justice system, black children are 18 times more likely than white children to be sentenced as adults. So the Men of Impact program we submitted for consideration includes literacy for youth, the "I read, I lead, I succeed" for young people who've fallen behind in reading, psychological counseling for young males who struggle with anger, abandonment, and disjointed families. The Men of Impact program focuses on instilling a sense of self-pride and new experiences young men are never exposed to. Considering black boys have a unique set of experiences growing up that often influence their development, it's important that mentors have, that they have mentors that also have those same experiences. And so today, we stand, today, we've come today to ask you to give consideration, and we believe that this is a great chance to change the trajectory of this city by allowing us to work with young men ages 8 through 14. That's our goal. We seek the opportunity. We want it. We've got the skill set, we have the business acumen designed already, we've worked with governmental funds, we've got years of experience in that, and we believe that if we're given that opportunity, again, to transform young men, we believe the trajectory of our community hinges on our ability to transform our youth. We're asking for that chance, and that's why we're here now. A sample of men from our churches, men that we work with in Mission in the City, we're saying we want that opportunity, and we're asking you to give consideration to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Next, we have Pastor Chris Pryor.
Good evening to our councilmen and women, to our mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for this time. I'm here to stand and echo the sentiments of our leader, Dr. Tatum. I served with the Saginaw African-American pastors. Not to reiterate, but just to continue to talk about what he shared. There are men who are in this room, as well as men, our men who are out in the hallways. And so we come together tonight to show our unity, but our seriousness in regards to moving forward. We know the importance of taking care of blight in our city, and we know that that must take place, but part of those ARPA funds, if you give it to us, we can help train young people who are already out there. We want to change the hearts of people. He talked about the age of 8. We believe that it's important to start at a younger age. We would never leave out those who are 16 and 17, but if we can get them younger, then that helps transform things prior to getting into problems. So tonight, you have pastors here, but not only that, you have business owners who are here. You have men who have fallen in life, but they have gotten back up again, and what greater testimony could happen tonight from men who have experienced challenges, who can share their stories? And so such as we talked about, the "Lead, Read, and Succeed" program, that would be a part of it. The Honorable Judge M.T. Thompson, the book that deals with bullying and helping to successfully help our young people, it's been a wonderful curriculum that has been very helpful and proven. And so with all these men, and just some of these men who are here, we believe if we could take a couple hundred young people in our community, that would make a great difference on the impact of what we'll see in this great city of Saginaw. So again, we ask for that, we continue to come. If there are any other funding that is available, we'd love to receive. As Pastor Dr. Tatum shared with you before, we do this on a regular basis. Some of these young people are a part of our places. This will help us give an opportunity to expand their horizon, to take them different places around, not only this city and this area, but to other institutions, so that they can grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final speaker tonight is Danita Dorsey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A recommendation from Guide House was given for community centers and youth development to be the number-one thing that this council considers. Our community centers bring people together. They enhance the quality of life for people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities by giving them access to affordable facilities and programs that bring families and neighbors together. They offer childcare, wellness activities, family programs, sports leagues, activities for seniors, STEM programming, job opportunities, and more. A solution to some of the problems plaguing our communities are investing in our community centers. But not only our community centers, our local churches and nonprofits that offer services and vital programming for the populations that they serve. For the children of working parents, there's a gap in time between when the school bell rings and when they arrive at home for dinner. Much can happen within that timeframe, and if there isn't a place to go to participate in organized activities or even do homework, the perils of disadvantaged neighborhoods threaten to swallow them whole. We need the city to make a real investment in our communities by investing in our community centers and the organizations that support those centers. That includes the NAIB on the south side, First Ward on the north side, Houghton Jones on the east side, the Wolverine State Baptist Headquarters, Mission in the City, parishioners on patrol, Saginaw Yarn, Daniels Dam Ministries, Guided Grace, Saginaw STEM, See What Works, CAC, and Victorious Believers Ministries. Today, I provide you with 28 solutions that were submitted to you through your ARPA portal, your ARPA portal, that have a record of servicing our community and have a record of partnership and collaboration in our communities. They are project numbers 82, 180, 185, 267, 140, 121, 251, 61, 292, 178, 326, 224, 364, 138, 289, 300, 294, 257, 336, 386, 154, 328, 364, 30, 136, 247, 257, and 196. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
Councilmembers, you have three minutes, excuse me, as well. We'll start tonight with Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. It was great to see some of my colleagues over at MML this past week. I was able to moderate a discussion about climate action plan and how IIJA and ARPA funds can help us kind of get ready for the future. You know, I think the number-one commodity Saginaw has is its water outside of its people, and we need to really invest in making sure that we continue to have access to clean water. We have another champion among our mixed, Councilwoman Williams. You got a contender. It's not for golfing, but Robert Sims, he's the WBC champion for boxing, and then he's going to have an event on the 26th. And 3145 Russell Street, Saginaw. So he just won this past weekend. It's going to be from 6:30 until 7:30 at the Neighbor Bee Community Center. So if you're able to go out there, I'm going to try and beat him and snatch his title away from him. That's a joke, but he is going to have that.
It is.
I wouldn't win. Also, on a sad note, we had lost a really great activist, servant Dunn. Merivale had passed away this past week. There's a GoFundMe page that I'll post on my Facebook, but I just wanted to take a moment to recognize him. And then also, if anybody has any information on the shooting of 16-year-old Amari Dos Collins, please call 989-759-17262, or Crime Stoppers at 1-800-422-5245. And then with the public speakers, especially with the ARPA funds, I totally agree with you that I think our greatest infrastructure are our children, and I looked into other localities and municipalities that are going to, that had put that bucket into public health, so there's an opportunity to talk more about that in our special meeting. So thank you so much for coming up and recognizing that. And that's all I have for tonight. Thanks so much, everybody, for showing up.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for showing, being here this evening. Thank you to our public speakers who shared this. We have our mics back. All right. Thank you for being here with us. I could hear myself. So thank you for everything that you shared today. Ms. Dorsey, I am going to ask that you can send those numbers to me as well. You were rolling them off tonight, so thank you for being here and sharing this evening. I do want to just quickly, I believe it's an update regarding the event this Thursday. It's Thursday for Mr. Robert Sims at the NAIB. So it's Thursday, October 27th, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 at the NAIB Community Center.
6:30.
So make sure to be there. He's on his way out to another, I think he's going to London, to get ready for another fight. So this is Saginaw's Homegrown. I also have to acknowledge Kakes, Kakes the Great. She is in the Scholastic, so one thing our children get in school, they get a Scholastic magazine that goes around the nation. Our own, Kakes the Great, is in the Scholastic magazine and will be shared around the nation. So that means the city of Saginaw is being shared around the nation for young business on, and Councilwoman Bench has it, being shared around the nation. And not only that, she's about to open up a business downtown Saginaw. So it is a blushing just to see some of the things, and I don't even know if I can share that we even have another young person who received the, Mark Zuckerberg and his wife, they have a foundation. And our own Julian Morris was given a grant to create a documentary regarding the impact of COVID and education in the city of Saginaw. So they are doing some great things, and these are young people. Not only are the young people doing great things, our community is just loving one each other this weekend. Our orchestra, our symphony orchestra had a great event. So the one thing I'm looking for, there's a bunch of trunk-or-treats going on, so please, 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 look online. We can't say nothing isn't going on this month, because everybody's having a trunk-or-treat, all right? So please make sure to get to the trunk-or-treat support, and then also afterward, go ahead and stop by and see your dentist. Make sure we're taking care of our cavities, all right? But I also want to say, I need to clarify, and I want to say regarding my demeanor last meeting, I do want to say, one, thank you to those city representatives who contacted me and checked on me. I really greatly appreciated that, but also at the same time, one thing I understand is, it's not always what you say is how you say it. And so I did hear from some who were just offended, and so my intention is never to offend anyone. Do I stand by what I say? Absolutely. That won't change. But how I can say things, it's never to offend, and so if anytime anyone would like to discuss, that's never my heart to make people feel bad, to offend people. So I greatly appreciate you. Love you, Saginaw.
Next, we have Councilwoman Monique Sylvia.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening. Thank you all for coming. It just does my heart, it just does something to me, if you know me, to look out and see all the young men out here today. And young men, that's from 1 to 101, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm very interested, Dr. Tatum, in your program. I'd like to be invited to maybe possibly sit in. You know, I might be the only female, but I just want to sit in and see, you know, what's going on. I really appreciate the young men that came with Pastor, because it really takes some young men that have been some places in their life to share with some of our other young men that are coming up. Not saying that you haven't been in trouble before, but if you've been in trouble before and you can share it, it's awesome. So, and I'd also like to say, I know Councilman, I'm sorry, Mr. Flores, Councilman Flores mentioned one of our great leaders in the city, Pastor Curbin Merrill. You know, he has passed away, and his homegrown service is the 29th of this month at Brown's Evans at 1:00 PM. If you'd like to come by just to show your respect, my condolences go out to his family and the city of Saginaw. I'm going to tell you, I've been following him for many, many, many years. Now, unlike him, we will miss him. So thank you very much, you all have a blessed rest of the day.
Next, we have, excuse me, Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First, thank you to our public speakers. Appreciate you all coming out and sharing with us. I had planned on having something written, but my day first back to work was kind of busy, but I still want to address the last meeting, and I stand behind Councilman Copeland and what he shared. I was nowhere near offended by what he shared, and I'm grateful that he shared what he shared. I think it's very important for all of us to understand that our positions up here are positions of influence and not power, not, not power. There's no room for egos when we're here to do city business. And we have been a part, well, we've been in meetings where things have gotten out of line, and we're supposed to be professional. Even though it's not our daily job, we're supposed to be professional. And by being professional, that means first and foremost, come prepared. And in our preparation, we have various avenues to find out what it is we need to know as councilmen and women prior to the meetings. So there should never be a point where our city manager is singled out, questioned, the way he has been in the past. There should never be any reason for our mayor's character to be called into question ever from this table. So with that being said, it needs to stop, and all of us as council people need to hold each other accountable. And if I ever am out of line, please forgive me, because it's coming strictly from my heart, I'm going to try to be as professional in that moment as I can. But if I get pushed to the limit, trust and believe, you're going to see a little something. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next, we have Councilwoman Bench.
Well, thank you. Good evening to everyone here, and before I get into our public comment, I do want to say that I also stand with Councilman Copeland, and I want to thank Councilman Williams for putting Williams for putting many of my thoughts and feelings into very eloquent words. And I appreciate that. And I stand with you in what you've said as well. As it was mentioned earlier, several of us had the opportunity to attend the MML conference. And while it's somewhat comforting to hear from your other peers and colleagues, to hear about the dysfunction and some of the disruptive politicized behavior that they're dealing with, it's disheartening too, because it's, this behavior is widespread, unfortunately. It's not just us. It's not just Washington. It's impervious, and it's getting to everyone at every level of government. But one of the speakers who was there spoke to our better angels and talked about how as elected officials, we really are the guardians of professional management, and we are the guardians of good governance, and that we have to call ourselves to, to meet that challenge. And unfortunately, some of us have not done that. And it's been a hard situation to, I think, find ourselves in. But I think that moving forward, we can all do better. And I, I expect that we should, and I hope that we should, because our mayor and our, our management deserves respect. Bad behavior at the council table does nothing but undermine the public's faith and confidence in us. It does nothing but drive away good employees. It causes good people to not run for office. It allows for bad people to get elected. So thank you, Councilman Williams, for everything that you said. To our public speakers, thank you so much for being here. To Mr. Sledge, and I suspect Ms. Beatty, if she had been able to be here tonight. I believe that some of the ARPA allocations that we've already made may go a long way to address a lot of the things that we have seen with Blight, with the spat over on Genesee and Harold. The council is trying to thoughtfully take steps to address these things and make our city the beautiful place that we, we all know and deserve, you know, know it used to be and should be and what we deserve. And other than that, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too just, the only thing I will add in regards to what has already been said is that we have the responsibility to sit here and be intentional and civil. With that, I do want to thank our public speakers. Your heart, your passion, your vision, and just your joy, period, is definitely appreciated by me. So I will always say that I appreciate when we do have a full house. When I pull up and I have to park somewhere else, it's like, yes, we have, the community is here. I just want to bring a couple reminders to everyone. This Thursday is going to be the best trunk or treat here at the city. So please.
No, it's Saturday.
Thursday. But the YMCA Heroes Appreciation Breakfast is coming up Thursday, November 10th. I am on the Membership and Program Committee. So please, military first responders, medical professionals, their families, and anybody, please come out for the breakfast Thursday, November 10th, 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the YMCA, right at 1915 Fordney. I also want to congratulate Maggie Crumter is the winner of the Best Kept Lawn in the city of Saginaw from scenic, it started with scenic. Also want to say congratulations to Robbie Dees. They're going to be opening up in the old Daniels Grill on the corner of Court and Michigan. So congratulations to you. Also want to say congratulations to Farrington Douglas and Ken LaCrowe, who are the president and vice president of the Urban Racket Foundation, which I'm a proud supporter of. They won the Spirit of Saginaw Award through the Saginaw County Chamber of Commerce this past week. So congratulations to them. And if you have not been to the Garber Tennis Courts, well, the season's over now, but they're beautiful. So please stop by. Yeah, they're still out there. Them racket ball, they're, they're proud. I too attended MML and had the honor of facilitating a session, which was awesome. It was great to be among peers across the state, but also to be able to share the vision and the things that we are doing in Saginaw. And some people want to come here and make a visit. So city manager, they're going to be contacting you. And then last but not least, arson watch is this weekend. I know the mayor and I, we are there every year. Please consider coming out for a couple hours and driving around the city. There's food, there's everything that you need, they provide. And we need to make sure, especially with the rash of violence that's been going on, but also arsons that have been happening and popping up, we need the community to step up. There is never enough volunteers. So please consider that. I believe they start at five, 4:30 or 5 o'clock. But you can check them out on Facebook. They definitely have the information. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman.
I beeped the timer.
Next, we have Councilman Oster.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. And I'm going to try and get all my stuff in. And within three minutes. So thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's like Councilwoman Bench said, it's really exciting to see so many people here. And I think Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia mentioned too. To reiterate, I do want to back up my colleagues too with George and Reggie and Annie. And just one thing, just, I'm just going to say one thing and move on. It's just that words really matter. And especially when you're residents in the community, Annie kind of touched on this a little bit tonight, if you know what she's talking about, but especially our leadership in the community. So it's one thing I take near and dear to my heart, that words really do matter because people are listening. So thank you. Charles, I live in the area where the GM plant is at. I agree with you. It's something that's been sitting like that for a while. So thank you for bringing that to our attention tonight. I'm going to kind of take a ride through there again and just kind of take a look around. Sherry, thanks for everything that you are doing in the community. I've had the opportunity to be with you at some social events and kind of socialize a bit. I agree with you about all this training. One of the things I've talked a lot about is the MI Reconnect program. Unfortunately, even when you talk about education, continuing education, it starts at age 25. But I have had some conversations with the governor's office, and they have assured me that they are kind of working on something because they said we have a gap from 18, when we get out of high school, to 25. And that's an important gap right there that we're missing when it comes to that education and certification program. Pastor Tatum, you got my attention tonight. So I, like Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia, I'd like to talk about this. I've made a lot of notes on things that people were talking about tonight. So thank you for coming out. And Danita, I too, I started to write those down, and then I lost track. So I'll be looking forward to, I mean, I tried. I lost after about five. So thank you for coming out and speaking on that tonight. It's always good to hear your voice. I too attended the MML training sessions over the last week. A lot of good information. Again, every time we go, there's something that we pick up, like Councilwoman Bench was talking about. And I too was moderating some of the events that were there. So lots of good information and hoping that you can come back and start to apply some of that. I'm going to go back to say something, Mr. Sledge, that you talked about grocery stores. And I have had some conversations with folk that, folks that work for some of the major chains. Not a lot of interest yet, but I'm still hacking away. That was a couple years ago. Saginaw's moved a heck of a lot forward since we've been since then. So with a lot of the new developments, maybe they can take another look. So I'm going to continue to have those conversations. And I just recently had them again with some other developers. Talked about the trunk or treat, but I also want to make note too that last Friday, we had a big event here at City Hall, actually at the Water Tower Plant, where Congressman Kildee and also Mitch Landrew, he was the ex-New Orleans mayor. They were here to prove, for the big kickoff, and not a kickoff, it was actually $15 million that we're going to get in the grant money that's funding for our water tower, to make sure that we have safe drinking water for our city and all the surrounding areas that we supply water to.
Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Boss.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and speaking today and bringing your concern to the city council here today. It is obvious to me, we're at a tipping point with, we know that we need mentors in the city of Saginaw. It's good to hear that the churches want to get involved. You know, I've been a mentor for a long time. I'll be doing this for the rest of my life, over 30 years. And out of the boys that I have mentored, none of them had a kid out of wedlock. And they all productive members of society today. You know, we, we can, we could do this. And I appreciate you guys here, but we, we could, we can, there's the Big Brothers and Sisters program too, that you guys can get involved in. Hopefully, some of the money will go to the pastors' organization. But there's other organizations that are doing the same thing. Hopefully, we will get our community centers opened back up, because I honestly believe that when the community centers die, our kids die more. There was somebody else mentoring our kids when the community centers died. And y'all know who that was. It was the guys and the gangs and stuff like that. So today, hopefully, we get some money into those programs, because if we don't save our kids, we ain't got to worry about who going to save us. Ain't nobody going to be, going to be there. And we know that. So there's other programs we can get into. If we don't get all the money we need for this particular program, there's other programs we can get into. I've been in the Big Brothers and Sisters program for over 30 years, had six little brothers. And like I said, none of them got in any trouble. One of them got into trouble one day, and the police gave him a wedgie, and had no problems out of him since. But what I'm saying is that we are responsible for our own youth. Everybody knows we got a lot of kids here locked up today. We need to, them guys, when they get out of jail, those got to be the same guys, need to be doing the mentoring. Them guys once has been in the trouble. They know what it takes. They can tell them about what's going to happen to you when you go to jail. So we need some kind of way engage those guys to open those other kids out. The church has been there forever. I mean, y'all been doing what y'all been doing, and we still got bad kids. So we need to get the guys that have been in the trouble, be the ones to mentor these guys that's thinking about getting in trouble. I mean, it, it works, just like anything else. Alcohol Anonymous, who helps the next alcoholic is the old alcoholic. Eaters Anonymous, who helps the big guy out, except for the guy that been eating too much for the first time. So we got to engage these kids and these young people into these programs. So I'm glad to see you guys here and hope you guys can help out with the mentoring here in the city of Saginaw. Because I'm sick and tired of these killings. It don't make no sense. We got young people out here killing young people, 15, 16, 17 years old, chasing people down with cars. And maybe we had the opportunity to talk to that young man or woman, whoever doing the shooting, maybe they wouldn't have done that. So thanks for letting me share those comments. Thank you.
No problem. I'd like to thank everybody who came on and spoke tonight. I hear you. I heard you loud and clear the first time. However, I hate to tell you, it's a process. And all of the, you know, thank you, Ms. Dorsey, because I've looked at all of those programs. We haven't, we haven't knocked anybody out right now. As a matter of fact, I want to congratulate all of my fellow colleagues who went to MML, because now they'll get a chance to see what I see. There's grants out there for all kinds of stuff right now, for the food bank, for infrastructure, and money is flowing. I've been saying it and saying it and saying it to the city. The city manager, he knows it. Every time I get something, I give it to him. We apply. Money is out there. I keep telling you, it's a new season. It's a new day. Saginaw is moving forward. It's not going to happen overnight because it didn't get this way overnight. My heart goes out to the family who lost their children over the weekend and to the Merrell family. Every time somebody dies, it takes off a part of this city legacy. Some people don't jump up and scream and want to be in, in, in the spotlight. I don't want to be in the spotlight. I love serving you guys. I love serving you. I came to serve, not be served. And when I hear people say all that we don't do, I be wanting to say, can, can anybody ever tell us what we do do? Do we do anything right? The money is out there, y'all. We just got to tap into the right resources to get money to come into the city. Gentlemen, my hand goes off to all the you brothers in this audience tonight. Don't make this your last time here. Okay? Don't just come when we talking about something money. Come or we ain't talking about it. Some of these lots, we could have been cleaning them up. Okay? And I mean us, not the city. I mean us, because they, we live next door to them. Ms. Long, I seen you on Friday. They talk about the best, Tricky Chunk is coming on Thursday. Nah, nah. My annual force on Sheridan at Bishop Campbell's Church, it is Saturday. And not only is it Saturday, I don't know how she planned it, but heart of the city, I'm going from 3:00 to 5:00, and I'm kicking people over to her place from 5:00 to 8:00. So who got the better day, Thursday or Saturday? We doing a back to back.
Thursday's the first best.
Madam Clark, y'all hating, y'all hating it. Y'all hating up here. Madam Clark.
We are now at reports from the city manager.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And first, I want to mention that the Saginaw Fire Department Award Ceremony was held on October 11th at Central Fire Station. And I want to congratulate fire engineer Sean Gerard, who's named the 2022 Firefighter of the Year. According to Chief Range, Sean has stood out this year for his willingness to jump in and help wherever he could. He has a unique set of skills when it comes to mechanical, and he's used those skills to benefit the Saginaw Fire Department and the city of Saginaw. Before joining the Saginaw Fire Department, Gerard was a firefighter in the Air Force and served eight years on active duty. And I'd also like to extend congratulations and a thank you to all the other fire personnel who were recognized at the ceremony. And those of you who did attend will note that we had a number of firefighters who have 20-plus years of service. So we thank them for all of their years to service, but also tells me we're going to have openings soon. So if you were at the fire awards, we saw, I believe it's our first class of youth that went through the fire program at the Saginaw Career Complex. There were four or five of them there. They, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, they come out certified firefighters. And I think at least one of them are in our process, hiring process now. So that's a great opportunity for them. There's going to be openings. Probably talk to Councilman Williams as well. There's a need for firefighters out there, and there aren't a lot of people who are certified. So that's a great program that you can get through the Career Complex. So any student in the area can do that. The, the youth who were there, I think they're either graduating or have just graduated, and they are working in fire departments in the area, maybe volunteer at this time, but they have that potential to go on and get a job in the state of Michigan. Councilwoman Scherzer did mention the Best Kept Yard. And I want to congratulate Ms. Crumter as well. She won that. And also the other 12 finalists who were recognized at the event. And also a thank you to our scenic and code enforcement personnel. They started this program in 2018. They're responsible for enforcement violations in our neighborhoods, but they noticed that there are a lot of people who take care of their property and take pride in it. So they wanted to recognize them as well. So I thank them for taking this on. This next item, you've heard many times for both our Office of Management and Budget, and also when we have the audit for Finance Department. The Government Finance Officers Association has announced that the city of Saginaw has once again received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its annual budget document for fiscal year 2023. The award represents a significant achievement by the city. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the city had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well a city's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and in the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. So congratulations to Ms. Yolanda Bland and her staff. This is the 15th consecutive year that the city has received this award. Good job, Yolanda and her staff. Thanks for all the work they do on the budget every year. And finally, as was mentioned, on October 14th, we had quite a contingent of folks from Washington at our water plant. It was hosted by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and they took that opportunity to announce $212 million in bipartisan infrastructure law funding to the state of Michigan for water and infrastructure improvements. So we had the EPA Regional Administrator Deborah Shore, the senior advisor to the President and White House Infrastructure Coordinator Mitch Landrew, Congressman Dan Kildee, Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy Director Lysel Clark, and also officials from the city of Saginaw. Representative O'Neill was there, and several others. Included in the funding is $15 million allocated to the city of Saginaw to fund our elevated water storage project. Currently, the city has no elevated water storage to maintain system pressure without power. Currently, the city has no elevated water storage to maintain system pressure without power. The staff have only two to five minutes to start the emergency backup generators during a power loss in order to maintain system pressure. After two to five minutes without power to the high-service pumps, the system pressure drops to a level of concern. A loss in pressure below 20 PSI results in the requirement to issue a boil water notice, which is a public health and safety concern. Our plan to construct an elevated storage tank will ensure that the city is able to maintain future compliance and increase reliability of our overall water system. The tower will provide our entire system with redundancy during a power loss event at the water treatment plant. As the frequency of severe weather events increases, this type of safeguard becomes more important to our system. So, our water supply system provides drinking water to city residents as well as to our 20 wholesale customer communities located in Saginaw County and portions of Bay and Tuscola County. So, this funding will impact 173,000 residents in our region. So, we thank the federal government, Congressman Kildee, and the state of Michigan for the allocation. And I have to recognize our staff at the water treatment plant, including Director Paul Reinsch, Plant Superintendent Ted Bamba, and Assistant Superintendent Amanda Keel for their hard work putting together this project. They did great work in the planning process and submitted this request that ultimately resulted in the awarding of the funds. And the number of people we had in there in the plant from Washington, including the staff from the various individuals, I'll tell you, they were very impressed with that plant. The plant is opened in 1929. Construction started in 1926. So, we talked a little bit about highlighting how that indicates the need for infrastructure investment, but it also, I think, is a testament to the staff that we have here in the city that works on that plant and the distribution system that with the age of that plant, they can keep it going. And if you've, I know several of you have gone through the plant, but they manufacture right on site a lot of those parts because they don't make them anymore. So, they do a great job, and I really want to emphasize that. And we did intend to do this project. You all have approved the notice that we did several months ago. This funding allows us to keep our rates more stable because you have to pay for it one way or another. We would have likely bonded for this. So, this makes it so that we don't have to do that, and that keeps everyone's rates more stable. So, it's a great opportunity for us, and it will improve our system. The build-out time is probably about three years. So, we have the initial engineering analysis done. With this funding, it allows us to move forward with that. And with that planning and construction, it should be open in two to three years, we think. And Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
Do we have any questions for our city manager? Yes, sir?
Two quick questions. The first one regarding the funds from the state for communities that were displaced due to highways. Is there any updates regarding that and how that, if we, as the city of Saginaw, if we have looked into those dollars? And then two, the position that you talked about restructuring, do we have any updates on that one and that progress?
Yep. So, the first one, we'll research that. We'll ask some Yolanda's staff to look at that grant and see if it's something that we could qualify or benefit for. And we're currently in the hiring process. That position was posted right after the council meeting that I discussed it. And I think we had about five to seven applicants. So, we're in the final stages of that hiring process at this time.
Anyone else yet?
Yes. I was at the, at the, when they, Mr. Kildee presented the money to the city for there. I was there too, and the labor president, Britt Polarski was there, and the pipe fitter president, Jason Plumbeal, was there too. So, there's going to be a lot of work coming here to the city of Saginaw. And we need to get these young guys that we talking about, we need to get them on those jobs to see if we can get them in those jobs. City manager, we need to find a way to hire people in the city on some of those jobs. It's so disheartening when I come here and I, I even talk to some of the people on the jobs that pull in the pipelines or whatever. A lot of people don't even live in Saginaw. We need to find some kind of way to get some type of content where the people in the city can get those jobs. I mean, if these young guys don't see their parents out there working on their jobs, that's not going to make them feel any better about themselves, you know? So, some kind of way, we need to find a way. And I hope that maybe you can, your staff can see, find a way where we can get that work. That's three years' worth of work in the, in the professional field. So, I think we need to find our best way to get that done. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we know the total amount that we're getting from IJAA?
From the infrastructure?
Yep, correct.
So, this is, actually, the, the funding mechanism for this is, is a little bit complicated. This is the first announcement for any funding that we're getting. But my understanding from the EPA is that much of this is actually from the ARPA allocation to the state of Michigan.
So, we don't have a total yet? There was a publication from American Public Transportation Association that said that in the next five years, we'd get $16.39 million. Is that kind of close to?
We haven't seen any of those funds, nope. This is, this is the first that we have been notified of anything related to infrastructure funding coming from the state or the federal government.
All right. I'll send that over to your email. Are we going to be able to use Guide House to help us with those allocations? Or Guide House's contract was specifically for ARPA, correct?
Yeah, it's for ARPA, but they help us identify, especially if there's an area where we're looking at spending ARPA, if there are other funds available for that. So, this, this funding in particular was through the state revolving loan fund. So, that's where the state is running these federal dollars through. So, this application was handled by our staff, and I believe our engineering consultant was Spicer on this, this app, this application. So, when it's more technical like that, we will use an engineering firm to assist.
So, they might be able to help?
Yes.
Okay. And then, has there been any, any update? The last time that Guide House was in front of us, there was an update on what type of cross-section they were able to, to identify with ARPA funds with the city and the county. And that was with youth and development. But has there been any other bucket or?
The county just had, I think, one of their allocation meetings last week.
Tuesday.
Last Wednesday. And I think they have another one this week. I think we'll see more from that. And I've asked for if I could get some of that information to share.
So, just upon request, we can get the report?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And then last, for the special meeting on the 28th of November, if I have an allocation that I want to put forward, would I just submit it to your office? And would it be able to be on the agenda?
Yeah, you could do, you can do it that way, however council members want to do it. If you want it on the agenda, we can include it. We've done that before. We'll just write it so that it's coming from a council. It's clear that it's coming from a council member instead of the city administration.
It would probably go under miscellaneous business.
It would go under miscellaneous business.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, city manager. The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV 191. I need a motion to, to pass to consider agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
It's been moved in support. Do we have any exceptions? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at Board, City Board Commission and Committee Reports.
Do we have any board reports? Madam Clerk.
Next on the agenda is appointment of board and commission members.
I need a motion to approve 1 through 4, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do we have any exceptions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at ordinance consideration adoption. We do have one on the agenda. It's to amend Chapter 153, the zoning code of Title 15 land usage, by amending Section 153.543, action of commission regarding historic resources threatened with demolition by neglect.
So moved.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are at miscellaneous business.
Do we have any additional business items that we need to discuss? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And don't you move. It's been moved in support. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Good night.